Tim Jones. He's our, he's taking over for KDC. And so, Tim, if you'd like to proceed.
Great, thank you. Let's get over to the microphone. We have a couple of items tonight and modification to one of the items. There's a, I'll go ahead and item C, 4C on the agenda. We had the applicant asking for a deferral on that. And the applicant was requesting if they could do a little presentation on the concept they were thinking about putting forward for the zoning amendment. And didn't know if it's okay to kind of show you that presentation. They'll, they'll come back at a later date to make their request either as a rezoning or as a conditional zoning. But the whole process is a little tricky right now because it's trying to be run side by side with the annexation. And, and there's a few things we need to iron out in the details of that. So would, would that be okay with, with the board to, for him to make a little presentation?
How's the board feel?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. No problem. Where's that presentation at? Just... Okay, the first item on the public items is ZT 2019-0014 GBD and Village Center Hotel.
I was going to go ahead and let him go ahead and present this in case he needed to leave.
You need to switch places with him. Okay. So we'll be, we'll be looking at ZM 2019-0026 Chestnut Lane, presentation only.
Yes.
Is that correct?
My name's Philip Hayes. My company is Land Investment Resources and it's a pleasure to come talk to you tonight. Typically, most of my activity in the real estate business is with development land, but more predominantly in single-family land development. I'd like to make a quick presentation. I'm assuming this is showing on your screens in front of you. So the basic location that we have for this site is on the west side of Chestnut Lane, west of Monroe Road. You can see in the photograph there, the white building just above the name is Austin Village Shopping Center with the, a single-family development across the street from it. As you move down on Chestnut Road, the site is a fairly linear site on Chestnut Road with, I believe, something like 1,600 feet of linear frontage on the road. This is a little closer view of the property. It's bounded on the east side by a tributary of Six Mile Creek that forms the backside of that subdivision. Across the street and behind the property are two legacy subdivisions. They'll pop up in a minute, but those are, I think, primarily septic, estate-sized lots that were from times when, quite some time ago, obviously. This is a survey of the property. We've just completed this. What you'll see with the colored lines, there is a small perennial, excuse me, a small intermittent stream channel that, for the most part, runs across the back of the lot. There's, there's a small portion of land that's in the bottom-left corner that we will have a small, open culvert across that creek to access. On the right side of the property is the flood fringe and floodplain lines for that tributary of Six Mile Creek. Most of that area will be put aside in tree save as natural area and open space. And additionally, the creek requires a 30-foot buffer on both sides. Was talking about the surrounding land uses. We have the Austin Village Commercial, which is about a half-mile away. The Austin Village Residential, which is approximately five dwelling units to the acre. Brookhaven is the subdivision that's kind of across the street. That was in Stallings jurisdiction at about three dwelling units. Callanwood is across the street to the right of our site, also about three dwelling units to the acre. And then Willowcroft, excuse me, out of those backwards. Willowcroft is the one that is in Stallings. Brookhaven is the one that's beside us. It was a Pulte subdivision that was developed some while back. And then those two legacy communities that, that I spoke of. So total of property is 16 acres. The land use plan specifies medium density. I'll be very honest, this is my first rezoning in Indian Trail and I'm starting to learn the process a little bit. And so that's why we're where we are. We understood that SF4 was the, the best for this area. As I looked at the guidelines and the tables, it looked as if there was very little difference in lot size between SF4 and SF5, about 2,000 square feet. And there were a few differences in setbacks and rear yards. So as I did a calculation when we were looking at the site with our engineers, there wasn't a big total unit count difference between SF4 and SF5. So my intention and part of the reason why I'm asking for the deferral was to understand the process for going through SF5 as opposed to SF4. SF4 being a by right, SF5 apparently being a conditional jurisdiction. So in any case, we know that our lot count will be somewhere between 40 and 50, probably 45. That's a 2.8 unit, dwelling units to the acre, which is a fairly medium-density zoning district or zoning characteristic. Again, I mentioned the buffers on the rear and the side creeks. That will be about two acres of property. And then the landscaping along the road frontage. I'd like to introduce, John Champ is here. He is the representative for Epcun Communities. He's happy to answer any questions you might have. Epcun is a privately-held company. They build strictly for 55-plus and they build strictly age-restricted, not age-targeted. So this will be an age-restricted 55-plus community. They have an over 30-year background in this particular end of the business. They've been actively building in Charlotte since 2013. And they typically like to do these smaller communities. You know, most of the super-big, age-restricted communities are very high on loading of amenity fees and, and community fees. So this offers an alternative for seniors that want to invest in the home and not so much in a big amenity package with heavy monthly fees. So that's, that's one of the specializations that they have. Here are a few examples of their product. Their product is designed for a fairly small lot with minimal additional area. It is a community-maintained lot, community-maintained yard. So the less of that there is, there's less expense on the HOA to do that maintenance. So these are a couple of the examples. They build strictly with hardy plank or 50-year siding, stone face and, and brick face. They have currently three communities nearby that if you have the opportunity, you can certainly go take a look at those. Courtyards at Marvin, Courtyards at Weddington, and Courtyards at Emerald Lake. This is one example of, which one is this, John?
That looks like the Courtyards at Marvin. And there's also one other, the Polo Club is right beside the Courtyards at Weddington. That also was an Epcun community just up the street.
This is another community and then this is also...
That's Weddington.
That's, this is also an illustration of how those yards function and how they use the side yard to generate a space that, that is a private space for each homeowner. A few quick facts about age-restricted Epcun communities. There is less traffic. This is a proven statistic. 50% less trips per day than traditional single-family homes and also reduced travel during peak hours. The services impact, the typical age-restricted home has 1.7 people versus 3.36 for a typical single-family. Obviously, virtually no school impact. There may be some grandchildren that end up living with their grandparents, but otherwise there is no impact on schools. Excellent tax revenue. They will typically sell in the 400 to 450 price range. We did some computations this afternoon and that typically will generate for this community $40,000 to $45,000 a year in property taxes. The high-quality architecture I spoke of, typically lower crime rate and essentially 55-year-olds support local businesses and participate more in activities near, in the community. So my original points, we did not know about the workshop process when we first applied, so we were in the queue when we found that out. We like to communicate as much as possible with the community. It's why I wanted to make this presentation tonight. And our engineer was not able to complete layouts for me to demonstrate that. So again, another reason for the deferral. So any questions that anybody has for me? Yes, ma'am?
When you, when you do get your, your head around what the workshop process is, when do you see this plan actually come into fruition if everything goes as you would like it to?
Well, typically, we'll probably be four months in the entitlement process, close on the property, and engineering will take another two to three months through the permit approval process. So you'll see this project coming out of the ground the first of next year.
And the other two properties, are they, I guess Phil, do you have any vacancies over there, any issues with selling that?
No. The, the Courtyards at Weddington and Polo Club have been, have been finished for quite some time. The Courtyards, was the other one Emerald Lake you had up there?
Yes, I think it was.
Emerald Lake, that sold out as well and it sold within two years or 100 units there. We sold that in two years. And then we, we have one other community that we did not mention, the Courtyards at Wesley Chapel. And we're about halfway through that. That's down near Cuthbertson High School. And we had 136 units in that and we'll probably sell out of that in three years. So we've, you know, we've had a lot of good success out in this area.
Any other questions?
What other communities are going to be near this project?
There, there are basically four fairly recent subdivisions that, that I covered kind of in the middle of the presentation. Brookhaven is the one that's the closest to it. It is a, I want to say 100 to 120 unit. And it's basically three units to the acre. Callanwood is across, kind of across the street, catty-corner from the site. I would say there's probably 50 or 60 homes in there, again, at three dwelling units to the acre. So the pattern, the consistent pattern on the properties that have been developed that surround us has been essentially the same that we're asking for in this process.
Yeah. What will be the space in between the communities?
Oh, well, there, between the dwellings, there's a requirement either in SF4 or SF5 for a 10-foot minimum side yard. So there'll be 20 feet between each, each dwelling unit.
No, I meant the communities.
Oh, between, the difference, so the creek pretty much separates us from Brookhaven. It's probably with our buffer on our side of the creek, it's going to be 100 feet from the nearest home.
Really?
And then the two communities that are across the street, we will be across the street from them. As far as the, the other older, single-family neighborhood behind us, you know, those backyards are extremely deep. Most of those houses are fairly close to the road, but those, those lots are generally anywhere from two to five acres. So there's a lot of space between where our community will be and those, those existing houses behind us. Does that help?
Not really.
Maybe I'm not...
No, because some subdivisions are practically backed up...
Right.
...to each other.
Right.
And considering that this development is for an older community...
Mm-hmm.
And if that other subdivision has kids or dogs or whatever, that is not going, you know, I think there should be some more space.
Okay. So from that perspective, I guess, first of all, the road is a, is a barrier between our site and those subdivisions across the street. The creek is a pretty big barrier from the subdivision to the other side of us. And as far as the few homes that are behind us, there's also the creek that's running on the backside of our property that will also have a buffer along that. So there will be good physical separations, good barriers, if you want to call it that.
No, I'm thinking of the noise factor.
Oh, yeah, well, you know, I like to hear little kids playing in our neighborhood, but, but...
You have to remember that you're talking about older residents.
Right.
You know, and kids playing is wonderful, but if somebody is sick, they may not feel like listening to the little children playing that day.
Right, right.
Could I, could I say something to that?
Yes.
I, I've only been with Epcun for three months. And when I started, I was, I was expecting to go out and find opportunities in areas that are a little more rural and quiet, like you're speaking of. But come to find out, our residents are very comfortable being in high-traffic areas with retail, with medical, with all the neighborhood services around.
That I can understand.
So surprisingly, that hasn't really been an issue. It's a good point, but I think with the way we set up the communities, which is, is they're all self-contained, it's all complete maintenance-free, you know, and the backyards are really kind of, they're just passive, open space. When you look at the back of our courtyards, that's really where our residents spend most of their time. And then the, then the amenity within our community, it, it's not so much affected by what's around it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. I know this is a little bit different than our normal meeting, but is there anybody here that has public comments that would like to speak? Okay.
I don't think it's going to be an issue with the, I live in the property behind you. You don't think it's going to be an issue.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have my acre of woods between my house...
Right. That's exactly what I noticed.
How much of the house is built that way?
We have signed up, is it Elena Aquino?
Aquino.
Aquino?
Yes.
Patricia Fluek? Are both of you here for this?
Yes.
Okay.
We both live in Brookhaven.
Oh, so Miss Aquino?
Aquino.
Aquino? If you'd like to address the, step up and state your name and your address or, okay.
Okay.
And you have 30, 30, excuse me, three minutes.
30 seconds. Wow, that's speaking really fastly. I can't do that.
Yeah, three minutes and 30 seconds remaining, the yellow light will come on just to let you know when, when the red light comes on. Okay.
Well, one of the questions we did have that was not addressed, and I know this was just a presentation at the moment, was annexation. That keeps being brought up. There was no discussion about that. So that leaves questions for us.
Can you speak to the microphone, please?
This one?
That one.
I thought everyone could hear my voice. I apologize.
We have questions about annexation and I know it was just a, this is not the formal, they asked for just a presentation at the moment. So that is something we would definitely like to learn about. I would like to clarify, Brookhaven does not have 150 homes. It has between 600 and 700 homes. So that's a gross difference. Myself and my next-door neighbor, we are the closest properties to that. When we purchased our houses, that Six Mile Creek, I do not know what it is today, but that was definitely within, a part of that is definitely within 100-year floodplain. So I know they might have changed it to 50, but I don't know if they're 30 feet or 30 yards is close enough with that. We definitely just have a concern for anything that is being built on Chestnut. The noise is loud already. I don't know how the people might feel about that. We are ready with all the deforestation that has occurred even behind us and even with our own development. I don't know how much, I understand you'll plant things, but it just, it exists, so just let you know, let your people know about that. A large amount of concern is also traffic. It is absolutely ludicrous. And that is not only safety as far as the number of cars and the number of car accidents that have occurred at the corner of Chestnut and Weddington. Most people cut through our neighborhood now just to get out onto forest lawn because it is so dangerous making a left from Chestnut onto Weddington. And then people are cutting through, I'm not sure the name of the corner, Strawberry Lane, another Chestnut community, because no one can get across there. And a lot of people in our development have been hit or in serious car accidents already. I understand older population, therefore the thought process normally would be less driving, et cetera. However, there will be more ambulance uses. There'll be possibly other fire. We are maxed out already. And that is a concern for anybody building within our community, not just these gentlemen here who are proposing this. So this is, we're desperate for some kind of solutions in general. And the safety of our families, all-inclusive, from the youngest to the oldest, the safety of our roads, the safety of everything, the noise that we all pay to live around here for is tremendous.
30 seconds.
And that says 5, so I'm going to go by that. And that's the concerns that I had at the moment.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Fluek? Please step up and state your name and you have three minutes.
Patricia Fluek and I live in 1011 Desboro Drive. So I'm going to be very close to the properties that the gentleman is proposing to build. When I purchased my property, I'm very close to the 100-years floodline, eh, line on my property. And I seen when it rains, how much the land, including the sewage area, gets flooded with water. So I just want the gentleman to study the land when it rains because it really gets wet by the creek. We do have, in average, three to four children per house in Brookhaven and pretty much one to two dogs per house. And I'm not really exaggerating. So I just wanted to clarify that to you when you build your development. I'm glad that it's 55-plus because I'm looking at the woods and I certainly would not like any more noise than Chestnut Lane brings with the cars and people on motorcycles or trucks. I just want to make sure you're not maximizing to your 50 houses or 50 properties is that what the proposal is for. Because, you know, it's more people living there and it gets tight. It is really tight with what Ms. Aquino explained, with traffic and now making a plan as developing that road for future congestion. So right now, your study says there is about 6,000 cars running to Chestnut Lane and on peak times, it's just dangerous and impossible. I was one of the ones, unfortunately, in a car crash there in that corner of Chestnut Lane and Matthews-Weddington Road. It is very dangerous. I'm a young person, equally as exposed to anybody of any age driving. I can imagine being a senior driving with the traffic and the people coming on Matthews-Weddington Road. Does like a 45 miles per hour corner. And any attempt to make the turn is just basically dangerous for peak times. I don't have anything else to say, but thank you for explaining today what you are proposing to build there.
Thank you for your comments. Just to give you an idea of where this will go now, they're going to go back and do some redesigning. And what the town suggested that they do is go to a workshop in front of the town council, put this plan out to the council, get comments back on what the council thinks they'd like to see. And then it, once they do their redesign, they'll come back to the planning board and you'll have another opportunity, or anybody in your subdivision or in the area, to make more comments about it. And then we are recommending boards, so we will recommend whether to approve it or not. And then it goes to town council for the, for the final yes or no. So I think we're probably looking at, what, another two or three months, would you, would you think?
Okay. By that time, we should have a traffic study?
Yeah. There'll be traffic studies and it'll go to the school system, to the fire department, the sheriff's department for comments on how they think it'll affect the area.
I'll chime in and Tim Philfeater correct me if I'm wrong, but 50 units is the minimum before a TIA is triggered, is that correct?
Yeah. We'll be advising them early in the process if they make any revisions beyond just the basic rezoning that they will need as they're developing their concept plan to first check with our town engineering to see what requirements there are for a study, to see if they trip the study threshold. If they don't trip the study threshold, it's already built into the process that they'll have to go through NC DOT and, and they'll do, they'll at least do their review on it to see if there's any other requirements.
Okay. Now, we'll start back at the beginning with the ZT 2019-0014 GBD and Village Center Hotel. Tim, if you'd like to start us up on that one? Thank you all for coming tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's not, it's not boring. Thank you. This is a zoning text amendment. Whoops, sorry. Getting used to the mouse here. The request is to amend Chapter 520 dash point 030 of the UDO to permit hotel-motel use in the GBD and the Village Center overlay districts. Currently, the requested uses are permitted in the regional business district, but not in the other two. The intent is to expand the allowed uses in order to permit hotel-motel in those two zoning districts. The applicant is Sun Valley Commons LLC in care of the Moser Group. The request details is to permit the following uses for buildings in existence as of September 1st, 2018. And with the table, you see tables provided in your packets too, that these would be conditionally approved in those areas. So they'd have to go through a conditional zoning process and be heard before a planning board and town council. As part of the request, there's some other housekeeping things that happen in other sections of the UDO as part of it. We'd be changing the maximum height to 70 feet in, in both districts. We would be lot density, lot size, density setback area. We would be adding that food stores, groceries, lodging accommodations, and theaters are not subject to the floor area limit in that Village Center overlay. It's another housekeeping item. And then this section of text for hotel-motel and provides the, the different details for And also under parking ratios, shows hotel-motel for overnight accommodations to add and the required parking for accessory uses. Also under entertainment, to cover conference or meeting center, one space for every three occupants. Also, under entertainment, to cover conference or meeting center, one space for every three occupants. So, the recommendation, the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan, promotes the goals in the comprehensive plan under land use and housing and under economic development. Viewed as a reasonable request by staff, and staff recommends the approval of the requested uses. For planning board recommendation, it's a two-step process. Motion vote to recommend the required consistency findings, and the motion vote for final recommendation to town council as favorable or unfavorable.
I know that we have had a hotel presented at Sun Valley at the theater before, and it was voted down by town council. So, how does this change to the UDO affect that?
I'm not as familiar with the history of that location. Do you recall what the zoning was there before? Oh, absolutely.
Good evening. My name's Cody Turner, I work for the applicant, I'm here on their behalf. You are correct, sometime back, there was a request to go through this same exact process that would allow the hotel use specifically at Sun Valley Commons. That was a very tough topic at the time. A lot of, a lot of the community members came out and not in support of it, and I think that that ultimately led to the council and their final decision. However, since then, in the past five years, lots of things have changed. The town is transforming. Through conversations with planning staff before Tim, with Rocks, with Katie, with Patrick, with the mayor, and multiple members of the council, it was their recommendation that we bring this back up, to go back through the process. We had discussed waiting on the new UDO to come out, however, because that process has taken so long, and no one was really sure of when that might be completed. It was recommended that we go through this process to modify the text to allow this use. So, that's why we're here tonight, and that's kinda where we've been, where we're at.
So, are you proposing the hotel there again? Is that what you're proposing?
That would open an opportunity for the hotel at Sun Valley Commons, yes.
Excuse me, Cody, if I remember correctly, it wasn't the hotel that people were against, it was the location of the hotel.
I was not involved in, I was not with the Moser Group at that time, but I think that that was, that was one of the points of the community, yes.
Yeah, that was the major point.
So, where is it? Where would it be now?
They were not really giving us a definitive exactly where it's gonna be, that's what concerns me. So, they could
Yeah, the text amendment would be for wherever those districts are located, would be where it would be allowed. Now, as, according to the chart, let me go back to, just as a footnote, the chart's being modified not to a P, so it's, we're not proposing that this be permitted by right. It's being proposed as a conditional, a change for a conditional, with a C on the chart. So, it would still need to come before you, under planning board, under town council, and if it was viewed as inappropriate, it would be up to the two boards, the council and the board, to, you could, you know, recommend against it, town council could vote it down. But it still offers the opportunity for review. It's not a complete, it's not a complete check, is what's being proposed. It's for a conditional process.
Yeah, I went to the, there was a big meeting at the community college. Auditorium was full, people against it, and of course, it was heavily attended at the council meeting when they made the decision not to do it. So, my concern is that we're not given a rubber stamp to do it where it got voted down before.
Right. Yeah, it's, it would be, it would have to be a conditional process, it could not be a rubber stamp for, it's, there's no P with it for permitted, so.
So, Cody, do you know where, I mean, it's gonna be where the movie theater is?
There's no, there's no plans at this point to file or to move anything forward. This will just give us the opportunity to potentially move forward with a plan in the future.
So, does the Moser Group have an idea of where they were like?
If there were to be one, it would be on that same, on that same corner up there at Old Monroe Road, beside the new Dunkin' Donuts and Jimmy John's.
Okay. That, okay, a lot there.
I attended several of the meetings a few years ago, and I think to everyone's point earlier, you know, not necessarily objecting to having a hotel in the town, but more so the location, especially with such close proximity to the neighborhood behind it. And then, also, with this proposal, we're talking about increasing it from forty to seventy feet in terms of height. So, in addition, so I guess if, looking back at the strong objection from the specific to that area and the neighborhood behind it, bringing that back up and then intensifying it by almost not quite doubling the height, and I think that was the absolute blaring biggest objection from the neighbors. So, kinda, can you talk to that?
We aren't changing anything from the application before. This was the same, and Tim, I don't know if you've looked at the application that was before, but we, when I was going through this with Rocks, when we were having the dialogue a few months back on how to present this and how to bring it back up, he had sent me the application from back in, I think it was 2014, if I'm not mistaken, and this was the exact same. So, that would just be increasing the maximum building height. As it stands today in RBD and the Village Center Overlay District to the seventy, we wouldn't be necessarily changing what was presented before, if that makes sense.
But it, so the one presented before was forty feet or seventy?
No, it was, it was to increase it up to seventy feet as well, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken. I haven't looked at that application recently, since we've, since we filed this one, but again, through the conversations that I had with Rocks, because again, I wasn't part of that 2014 application process, this is, this is the exact, almost to the T, what was presented before.
Mr. Gage, can I speak, please?
Normally, we have you sign up, but if you'd like to, sure. Any, any other questions right now? Now, I mean, will we go through the same opportunity for everybody in the community to, that we did last time? Because I think I know what's gonna happen. That was such a hot topic, and so, I mean, are we still gonna have community meetings if there, if a hotel's proposed?
Part of the, part of the process for conditional zoning, so yes.
Going through a rezoning, it's just as, at a conditional level.
Right.
And I guess just to, and maybe I'm oversimplifying this, but what's before us is not necessarily, not necessarily for Sun Valley Commons. It is merely to cover the two zoning districts that are currently not where you can't do anything. It's just that one district where, where that can be
Yeah, one of, one of planning's considerations wasn't just this specific case, it was also the fact that we've had a couple of proposals for hotels recently, which, which has kinda been a new interest. I don't know if it's renewed, I haven't been here that long, but from what I've seen, there've been some, a couple of hotel inquiries that are coming in.
Okay.
And it, it, you know, follows along with their goals for financial development, but still provides, you know, heavy review that we have under the conditional. We didn't feel like it was, it's not a by right kinda thing.
So, I understand staff is recommending that we do this?
Staff is recommending.
Okay. I mean, I kinda feel like, you know, a lot, a lot of time has gone by, and yes, while the community was very active in the last, in the last occasion, you know, let's give them another chance as a community to once again step up and say, I do or I don't. Excuse me. But at the same time, we're giving the businesses in our community the opportunity to get our approval, so.
And again, as Tim had mentioned, and maybe Dennis had foreshadowed, this is not a rubber stamp. It's, it's giving the opportunity and the flexibility in other zoning districts, because just, again, place and context is key. You know, it, I'm in agreement with John, you know, up on front, fronting Monroe Road is not the right place for, for this, backed up against subdivision where families live. It's not the right place for it, but there probably are properties and parcels that currently do not allow this, somewhere in town, where this could be a good, a good thing, and an opportunity for the town to have, have something that they currently do not.
Does this cover, like, the area behind Lowe's? That's been kicked around as a, as a hotel site. Does this, does this affect that area at all, or?
If that's zoned, if that's zoned appropriately.
But this is just specific to Sun Valley?
No, this is, this is a generic text amendment that was opened, applied to by Moser, but it's for people, staff, or others can submit an application for a text amendment to the UDO.
This is anywhere in the town?
Anywhere that's zoned, GBD, or
That's those two districts.
The Village Center Overlay District.
This is not specific to the Sun Valley.
Correct.
See, one of the problems is, as I was speaking earlier to you about, the town was supposed to be split up into all of these villages, so where are the village overlays now? You know, to say that, you know, this village overlay is going to encompass X, Y, and Z of the so-called villages, it may not be acceptable.
Right, and the overlays on the zoning map that we have, or existing zoning map, the overlays have a ring around them in those areas, and if they fall within, you know, that ring touches them, then they have to be considered under that overlay. But when we consider it, we can look and see that, oh, this Village Center District overlay, they're looking at a hotel, and it's conditional zoning. And so, it would have to go, it would have to go through that.
Because we just went through this, what, two years ago, you know, at the college about the hotel.
With a specific hotel, the question is, what other areas does this affect? Can you specifically name other areas other than Sun Valley, so we can make a good decision here on it?
I can't mention, other than anything that's within, that's already zoned for the general business district or the Village Center Overlay districts
Okay.
on the map, I would have to, I would have to pull up a map.
Yeah, you know, that's the type of information that we need, because
I think we need to
what was in the past is apparently no longer.
I'd like to recommend that we postpone this till the next meeting and come up with a map.
Do you not have a zoning map that we could pull up real quick? I mean, surely, there's, we can't access one with, in here.
Let me see. See if Crystal's got one in. Let me see if I can access one.
You can go on the city's website, I've pulled it up on my phone.
Good job, thank you. It's usually just on my wall.
This is GBD, this is GBD. Scroll down that way, Sun Valley Commons is
Right here.
the next circle down.
And this is where, right here?
That is Waxo Indian Trail and Old Monroe. So, that's the
Okay. Chestnut Lane?
In the blue circles?
The mouse is being jumpy. Yeah, but right here's another Chestnut Lane and Potter. I doubt it would see a hotel at these two places, so. Does that not cover, I mean, they talked about motels on Independence, is that, isn't that business areas up there too? Okay, now we're seeing them. Where's the scroll bar? I can't pan or I can't scroll. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, right.
The lighter blue shade is the GBD?
Correct.
So, the The height changes, would that also go in effect with these blue areas here, the dark shaded areas for hotels? It would not.
No, and I'm not sure what those height requirements
Are the circles the overlay?
Looks like they're forty right now for, I'm sorry, RBD, we'll go to seventy. So, GBD would stay
Right. Well, that's why I wonder, I mean, how much, how much longer before the new UDO is going to be finished? Because it looks to me like there's an awful lot of loose strings here.
Still several months out, yeah. Yeah, it's not, it's not, I wouldn't call it soon. But I don't know if it's quite a year. But I can't say if it's six months or, we're still, still need to screen the draft. The draft's got to come back and, so we don't have a draft copy yet until it goes, we get a copy that goes through the lawyer and to make sure that whatever proposals we're making is, is proper, so.
Okay, now this has been to the council workshop? Has this been to the council workshop?
No.
For them?
No, for, for this?
Yeah, right.
There's no concept associated with this.
They're not proposing the hotel. No, they just want the change so they can propose it. Is that correct?
Correct.
Any other questions?
Sorry for the clunky, you know, the clunky map there, but.
It just gives us a better idea that really there's no, there's only like two spots that this really would apply because these other areas don't have the, the roads or the density or whatever for hotels. So it's almost like we're endorsing these two sites if we vote for it or vote to recommend it. Okay, we have a, a public comment. Michael Falconberry, if you will, step forward, state your name, address. You'll have three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you'll have 30 seconds.
Good evening. Michael Falconberry, 519 Pagan Circle. Again, this is the first I've heard of this. The one disturbing comment I heard during his presentation is he said the mayor and town manager came to, I'm assuming the Moser group about this amendment again. As you know, there was a big battle to have a hotel in Sun Valley. Your best bet is to leave Sun Valley District out of this amendment, period. It's not built, the property's not large enough to have a building that large. Nowhere. I've walked that property. I've loaded airplanes in the air force larger than that property they're proposing to have that hotel built on just a few years ago. If it comes before, again, to the community, it's going to be another battle and the Moser groups don't lose again. I wasn't understanding he was going to build a hotel at Sun Valley Marketplace. Perfect location, next to Highway 74, major thoroughfare through Indian Trail all the way to Wilmington, North Carolina. Also, you have the expressway now. This is a dinosaur. And while we keep bringing this up, I understand there's a need for hotels. I've already on the record has stated we need hotels. The proper location for the hotels is where most of the traffic is, not off the beaten path. I've been in trucking for over 20 years. I don't have my drivers going off several miles off the major road to get a hotel room. I don't know why this is bringing up again. This is getting very old and I'm getting tired of the same people being involved. No means no. And like I said, I'm going to verify this, what he said is true or not. If I find out the town manager and the mayor is involved in this, we'll see about it. Thank you for your time.
Thank, thank you for your comment. We have a recommendation.
I just have another comment. Yeah, I, I kind of, I do agree with the gentleman that just spoke about it because I don't think, I live in the Sun Valley area too and I don't think a hotel, it's, it would, not for that particular area. It's not, when I go to hotels, I don't drive in town. I'm driving from, hotels usually are off the major highways. So as far as, I think we definitely need a hotel, but the area, the Lowe's area somewhere in the front end of Indian Trail is more suitable. When you think about the hotels that they're building in Monroe and then even in Stallings is right and then Matthews, they're all right off of 74 and 485. So I don't think that Sun Valley should be even considered. There, there's other things you want to, if you want to build, I think a bowling alley would be a good idea. Some sort of entertainment because you do have a lot of high school children. I mean, that's like a, a prime area for like students to participate in and be a part of in the community as opposed of having a hotel where people go in and out of, having trucks, that, that road is not going to be able to handle that. And I don't think if you drive all through Old Monroe, even from Ma, I mean, going through Matthews and then Charlotte, you don't see a hotel over there. So I really think that Sun Valley needs to be off of the, you know, that location needs to, I'm fine with recommending a hotel, but I think Sun Valley Commons or whatever you want to call it shouldn't be a part of that.
I think that what we need to really focus on is we are not actually looking at a, a, a presentation for an actual hotel. What we are considering is if we can make a conditional amendment to our UDO so that until we get our UDO proper, it gives people the opportunity to, if, if our UDO doesn't work for them, they need a way to circumvent it, to get around it. And I think that we're focusing on a hotel at Sun Valley when our focus should actually be on changing the UDO. And, excuse me, if that's what they want to do and that's what it comes to, then we'll vote on that appropriately and accordingly and make our recommendation to the council. And if the community, you know, wants to rally like they did the last time, then that's up to them. But I don't think that we're focused on what we're actually trying to achieve tonight.
Right.
So basically, what are we trying to achieve tonight is to try to, I'm trying to make sure I'm understanding. What's our goal? Our goal is to do what tonight?
We're just opening up a rule so that somebody who has been, who wants the opportunity to present something to us that the UDO currently blocks, it gives them the opportunity to have the chance to, to plead their case and without breaking the rules. We, it's conditional. We can say, okay, in that condition, yes, you can have that. Or if we don't like it, then no, sorry, we're not going to, you know, we're not, we're not accepting anything for a hotel tonight. We're just giving people the opportunity to present those ideas to us and to the town council.
That's true, but it's only given to, I mean, really practically, there's only two spots.
Okay. And I, I understand that.
One is we've already turned down.
I understand that, but again, they're going to have to come before us with that plan and town council. I guess my concern is, you know, if our UDO isn't proper, then we need to be able to provide businesses in, in Indian Trail with another option, another way to, to make, you know, to make their businesses work. And not just this business, I'm saying for every business, you know, I mean.
That's why I think we should wait for the UDO to be completed rather than have everybody rally again and go to the community college and all pack into the town council meeting and, and go to all that trouble to get something defeated. Come along and have a whole revision to the UDO that will cover what is good for a hotel for, for all the business areas.
I think we need to know, first of all, when they talk about the village overlays, who is encompassed in these overlays? And once, you know, I would feel more comfortable if I knew that 20 residential and 18 businesses were encompassed in a village overlay. And I feel by approving a village overlay, it's giving carte blanche for anybody to come in and say, hey, we're going to build this and you have homes and all sorts of things.
Well, but they're still going to have to come before.
I, I know that, Michelle, but I need to know who is in the village overlay.
Well, there's going to be an outrage if we bring this back up again. I can tell you that now. I mean, I went to all the, did you go to meetings? Yeah. I mean, it's going to be, they're going to want to wring our necks for bringing this back up again.
Well, but here's the thing, we're not bringing it back up. The public is bringing it back up for us to, you know, decide if, if it's okay for them to do that. And, you know, and I, I think that we probably need to talk about it a little bit more and get you all the maps that you want to see and get the information before we make any decisions that.
I agree. We need to see something before.
Well, we kind of looked at the maps.
Well, Samantha's saying, I mean.
More information.
More information.
Because the public's not bringing this back up to us again. It's the developer that's bringing it back up. The public pretty much made their feelings very clear last time.
Yeah, but there again, that was five years ago and our population, I don't know what the, what the numbers are, but, you know, maybe the demographics, maybe the demographics have changed. You know, I mean, I'm not, I'm not pro hotel in Sun Valley. That's not what I'm saying here. I'm trying to look at what we're trying to accomplish tonight is to just vote on whether we can have a conditional policy added to our UDO as an option for businesses to use since our UDO is not proper.
Yeah, it's already provided in the, it's, it's already provided in the other district. So we're just adding two other districts that it could be considered in.
Yeah, I just, I, I don't, I don't want us to feel like we're voting for a hotel in Sun Valley because I don't feel like that's what this is.
No, but it sets up another major fight in the town, is what it does.
And if I can make a quick comment, and, you know, so hypothetically, if we were to, you know, recommend this, fast forward, you know, and I know the Moser group does a ton of great work and they put a ton of money into their plans and designs and things. So if they have a product on the back burner, ready to go, if we bless this, they present it to the planning board again and kind of start that process again. So if we, if we bless this tonight, we know that this is coming down the road. So in kind of, you know, we're, you know, bringing, bringing it back up.
Yeah, and yours, yours, just as a reminder, it's, you know, yours is just a recommendation for town council. Town council will review your recommendation and, and make the final call.
We got the choice to delay and look at more maps or make a motion tonight and one way or the other. So which does the, the board want to do?
Wait. I motion to wait. I don't, I can't vote on something unless I have more information.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, so we'll put it to vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Looks like it's unanimous. No booing and opposed. So we'll get some more information and discuss it again.
Thank you. The request is to amend chapter 530 of the UDO to permit retail and wholesale light equipment sales, rental sales in the light industrial and village center overlay districts with no sales lots or outdoor storage. Requested uses are permitted by right in the GBD and RBD districts, but not within the two being requested. The intent is to expand the allowed uses in order to permit light equipment sales, rental use in those two districts. The applicant is Euro Prestige Imports LLC. The current situation with Euro Prestige Imports is they work with exotic cars and they're going to have a wholesale, they have wholesale cars stored in a, in a warehouse area. And at times with exotic cars, someone will come through and try to arrange a purchase instead of just shipping them around. And so their problem was that in order to, to go by the books and to be permitted in our, in our town, they came and checked on it and we told them they would need, it would need to be allowed to make that sale there. There's no intention for this text amendment to have an outdoor lot. It's not going to be allowed. It's just, basically, they can have a desk and perform sales functions inside and we can permit them for that. This is the request details. That's in your packet. These, these two, as I mentioned, are provided in the other district. This is just to provide it within the industrial district. And this would be for anyone to be able to have a sales office inside, but no sales lots on the exterior. They'd be permitted by right. You see with the P's there in the chart. But there's no sales or outdoor storage, so nothing on the exterior will, will indicate what they're doing inside. Recommendation, request is consistent with the comprehensive plan, promotes the goals of land use and housing, economic development. It's a reasonable request. Staff recommends approval. And ready for the motion or vote to recommend consistency findings or motion to vote to, and the motion vote to make final recommendation to the town council for favorable or unfavorable recommendation.
I have some questions for the applicant. If you'd like to step forward.
Yes. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Cyrus Klezy. The location is 1021 Van Barren Avenue. Tom has just expressed exactly in details what it is about. This is really based, it's collection management. And I have worked many years in this, in this field where we actually, I work for main dealerships where we actually, high-end or collection. And today, I, I mean, I'm nowhere wanting to be in a dealership mode, meaning this is strictly with a very bespoke number of clients who actually have private collection of vehicles. They can be race car drivers, businessmen who have been successful and have just basically collection of, of American muscle cars or European cars. And the, the need is this is we, we are working with a certain number of clients and it's really upon appointment or people we already know, okay, who have been in this, in this world and have from 15 to 20 cars. And what they do is, these cars, they like turning them or they also, also don't want anybody being touching them, working on them. They want particular people to work on these cars. And when this happens also is there is a need where sometimes they want to move these units, but they don't want these units to go through the real regular way, meaning they don't want it to be through dealerships. They don't even want everybody to know that they own XYZ vehicles. So where I intervene is, I intervene in a, in a favorable way where basically I represent them, sell the vehicle without putting it out there to the public. And most of these sales are out of state, okay? They're not even here or out of the country. And in, in, in the location we are right now. where we actually high-end or collection. And today, I mean, I'm nowhere wanting to be in a dealership mode, meaning this is strictly with a very bespoke number of clients who actually have private collection of vehicles. They can be race car drivers, businessmen who have been successful and have just basically collection of American muscle cars or European cars. And the need is this, is we are working with a certain number of clients, and it's really upon appointment or people we already know, okay, who have been in this world and have from 15 to 20 cars. And what they do is, these cars, they like turning them, or they also don't want anybody being touching them, working on them. They want particular people to work on these cars. And when this happens also is there is a need where sometimes they wanna move these units, but they don't want these units to go through the real regular way, meaning they don't want them to be through dealerships. They don't even want everybody to know that they own X, Y, Z vehicles. So where I intervene is, I intervene in a favorable way where basically I represent them, sell the vehicle without putting it out there to the public. And most of these sales are out of state, okay? They're not even here or out of the country. And in the location we are right now, if I would take that same sort of...it's very tricky because back in the day, that same annotation of zoning, if it was in Mecklenburg County, that zoning was okay to have a dealership, okay, as saying retail instead of wholesale. Because in state of North Carolina, if you are wholesaler, you can't sell to the public.
Right.
But you can sell to a dealership.
Right.
So in my rights happening right now, it's like I have to get another somebody else involved. I have to sell the car to a dealership. And depending on how it is, sometimes it's not really...I have to choose where I'm gonna go. I know people, I mean, but it's not favorable neither for the client sometimes. So it's like, what do we do? Maybe two, three, four operations a month? So, and it's really strictly in enclosed environment. And in that environment, already, the building itself is somebody who actually has business in this town. He's a father of very successful race car driver, okay? And he is a car fanatic. And basically, at the same time, he has his own collection. And you can only sell X amount of cars, I mean, a person in state of North Carolina, you can't...I mean, if you wanted to sell a car, you can sell the five.
Five cars.
That's it. So, and I mean, we're going a little bit above that. And, I mean, it really, it's something that, it would be helpful because I would not have to intervene and get other people involved in this. At this location, I already got approved for wholesale, so I actually have an active wholesale license at that location.
With D M V?
With D M V, it's done. I mean, yes, I have...
You're approved by D M V?
I have been approved by D M V.
As a wholesale-only dealer.
That's correct. And, I mean, when I expressed to them, said, it's not a problem. You get it approved by the zoning board, we're fine. I also did approach M P V, M V P, who is actually the association who actually handles Old Hickory area. So basically, they're the community, housing community or however. So they keep everything nice and clean and neat. I approached Mr. Bruce and he gave me, I mean, he said, if the board approves it, we're okay with it. The moment it stays within the building and there's nothing from the outside which says that you're doing this.
Now, you have cars there on the premises?
Yeah.
And how many square feet do you have?
10,000.
10,000?
10,000 enclosed square feet.
Enclosed.
Yeah, that's it.
And so when you sell a car so the board knows, you're the wholesaler, so you have to have a dealer do the transaction. So you deal with the dealer and then the dealer would have somebody come by and pick up the car, or you may ship it to another state.
That's exactly.
To another country.
There you go, yeah. That's exactly it. So, I mean, in this case, this is what I have to do technically right now. In some operations, the further I go down the road is I actually have to sell it to...right now, I have to sell it to a dealer.
Right.
So I can sell it to a client.
Right.
And depending on what it is, depending who the client, who is the owner of the car, it's like, I don't need to, I don't wanna divulge to certain people. It's as simple as it is. Because neither of them, they wanna say, well, I don't need them to know that I own a $300,000 car, as simple as it is, okay?
Right.
So there we are standing. But it's not only that, it's really, I mean, it comes down to collection cars or bringing, I mean, just like recently, we're working on an old Packard of 1939, okay? So, I mean, I have people interested, but...so it would be simpler if I could actually move on. So these are not only cars that are worth 200, some cars are worth 40, but are collection pieces. That's it, that's all it is. So what we discovered, there was maybe an opportunity. Because one, two buildings down the road, they're actually, it's zoned to be, well, to use the word dealership, okay? And again, I don't like using the word dealership because this is not what we are. We're not a dealership. It's not like when you drive down Independence and you see all these dealerships or it's nothing to do with that.
You don't have a dog on the hood of the car.
You are...you are walking in a...I mean, it's like, it's impeccable, clean, neat, there's not, there's no oil on the floor, there's nothing, it's just, I mean, it's very, it's really upon appointment and it's a hangout place where sometimes some guys bring in their car, we do a little fix to it, okay, or whatsoever. And some of these cars might be stored there, but it's not like many. It's, I mean, you might have a total of 20 cars stored in there. That's it, pretty much it. Because it's really relating, it's based upon just a few good clients of ours, that's it, and we go from there.
So this recommendation is to remove the dealer, you're saying?
So...
Because the state requires you to, as a wholesaler, they have to sell it to a dealer, correct?
Well, right now, with the zoning, the zoning doesn't authorize me to be retail at that location. So what we were requesting is we could turn exceptionally that area, that's just that building, but for retail, but it would, because here's the problem, when you say dealership, you actually put 50 cars outside, okay? And, I mean, that's the problem. And it's not, it's not what this is meant for. So this is strictly what we're trying to figure out if there was a way just to do this retail, but strictly enclosed in a building, and that's it. And nothing is seen from the outside. There's not even a sign on the building at all.
So essentially, it's retail, you just choose not to do the retail the way a typical dealer?
Yes, we actually do it through the internet.
Right.
Through the web, okay?
What's the difference, though, if he's a wholesaler or if he's a dealer, as they call in automotive terms, as long as he's required to keep his inventory indoors? What's the difference?
Oh, between wholesale and resale?
Well, a dealer can be, they don't necessarily have to be retail, they're given that, under D M V, they're a retailer where they can sell to individuals, to the public. From what he's telling me, he's a wholesaler where he has to sell through a dealer, but he can have somebody come to his place and look at the cars and he can run it through a dealer, quote-unquote, dealer the way he's licensed. So...
Tricky thing, because here's the thing, you're entitled by D M V, you can actually have, you can store vehicles there.
Right.
You could actually have somebody look at the vehicle there.
Right.
You can't sell it from there.
You can't sell it.
So it's like I have to put the car in a truck.
Now, is that D M V's restrictions? Do they require you have a lot? Because I know they require you to have certain square feet for...
Well, there you go, but the square footage can be interior. So that's exactly what it is. But here's what happens when you say dealership. Most like, when you say to anybody dealership, somebody's gonna say, well, I'm gonna park 10 cars up front.
Right.
Well, no, we're not parking 10 cars at that price up front. We're not even bringing it to anybody's attention because we don't even want people to know that they're parked there, okay? That's it.
My question is, we're doing a broad thing here, just not only for his application but for others. So if you've got somebody that sells a piece of equipment and they have a building and they're not gonna put it outside, they're gonna keep it inside, that would apply to them too, is that correct?
That's correct, but this is already in the, already in the light industrial area, so.
I think our concern is so that we don't have a car lot with a bunch of cars sitting out front with streamers and all that stuff and our ordinances. So is there, I mean, can...
Yeah, car lot's already covered under a different section.
Right.
So it's already, they're already permitted in some way in another section of their ordinance.
I'm just wondering if he wanted to become a dealer, what difference is it gonna make? And then actually, he could end up being a dealer down the road and we wouldn't know about, probably know about it because he's gonna keep it indoors. So...
We, I mean, you are, you're no matter what, you're a dealer. I mean, the fact is, it's indoors, that's all it is.
Right.
It's indoors, it's dealership indoors, that's, but it's really collection management. I mean, there's nothing, yes, it's real, it's gonna be, somebody asks me, yes, I'm a dealer. But you need, you need a X amount, you need to make X amount of square footage to do it, okay? And just because of the zoning purpose, I mean, if someone gives me the right zoning, then D M V just approves it because they already approved wholesale. There's no problem. Just get a letter and we will give you, authorize you to do retail sales. That's pretty much all it is. And, I mean, but I can see where the concern is, and this is why I approached the association who handles Old Hickory and said, Cyrus, the moment we can stipulate, the moment, I stipulate this, the moment it stays enclosed in the building, we have no problem at all. Because basically, it's for visual purposes.
Right.
When people drive by, that's the only reason why.
And that's what the town's concerned with too, correct?
That's it.
I mean, I don't wanna overcomplicate it, I'm just thinking, why, you know, if, why would you have to have another person in the middle to do your transactions if there was a way for you to be a dealer, retail dealer, but have the restrictions that you have to keep your inventory inside?
So that's what this detail says, that he has to keep it inside. So he can, in my personal opinion, he can call himself a dealer or whatever, as long as he keeps it inside, like the...
I mean, we are, I can call myself a dealer as of now, I mean, I am a dealer. But the thing is, a dealer who is basically wholesale, meaning that, that's the only thing, but in the term of how things are presented, a legal, I mean, I am not entitled to sell directly to you.
Right.
I will sell it to you, I'm just gonna take a different route, but I'm getting other people involved.
Whatever you wanna do, I mean, I understand what you're doing in your business and all that, I just, you know, I wanna make it easier on you, but if you prefer to sell through dealers, then that's...
No, I prefer selling, I mean, I need to sell myself, so that's the reason why, getting the right zoning, I mean, I just basically retail out, so I don't get anybody else involved. It's between the client who owns the car and him and me, I represent him towards the buyer, that's it. And no one else involved.
The requirements of D M V for a dealer's license, do you have the requirements there in your property now?
So this is, it's the exactly same thing, there's no difference. Basically, I mean, my license is active, meaning that I have dealer plates, I have everything I need. I can represent, I can go to auction, buy cars, do it, I can store the vehicles, no problem. Right now, that's all it is. I sell, I have to get somebody else involved, meaning I have to sell the car to a dealer. That's it.
But what if you sell direct?
I, well, that could put me in jeopardy. I'm going against, I'm going, I mean, if I sell direct, I can, I can sell to you directly.
But if you had a dealer's license to sell direct to people, do you fit the requirements for D M V with your square footage and where you are now?
Yes, absolutely, because I already fit it right now. Because the whole, there's no difference between wholesale and this, so yes.
So the reason you're in here asking to be a wholesaler is to be able to meet the town requirements?
I'm actually, no, I'm asking to be a retail, because I'm already approved to be wholesale at that location.
So wholesale right now?
I'm getting confused.
Well, wholesale, he's saying, right now, he's currently wholesale.
But he's in here, he's saying he's here to be retail tonight, which is a dealer.
That's correct.
Correct, because right now, he has to deal with the middleman.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you were...
No, 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 but I am legally, but, I mean, that's what he called it. You're a dealer, but you can be a dealer by being wholesale or retail.
Right.
I just need to be, have the right zoning so I can be actually retail.
Oh, so you're in here asking?
Yes. There you go.
That's my fault.
Correct.
Apologize. I'm in your business too much, and I was...okay, I got you.
There you go.
Okay. So, tonight, if we vote to give you this permission, we recommend this to the county council, then you can become a dealer and sell to individuals?
Correct.
I got you, okay.
And I can represent my clients as well, the clients who actually are, I mean, one of the clients actually is, has business in this town.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
I think I beat it up enough anyway. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to recommend.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. All in favor and no objections, okay?
Okay.
Is that both for, sorry to...
Motion to recommend the required consistency findings and also make final recommendation, a favorable recommendation to town council.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Have a good luck and thanks for doing business in Indian Trail.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Okay, we'll go to the planning report.
Yeah, right now, with the planning report, we have some things that are changing with the board. We're going from, was it town council that decided to take the number of the board down? So instead of six members and two alternates, it's gonna go to five and one. So it'll be five members and one alternate. And we're coming up on, I think, some position expiration, so we're gonna be looking at getting some information, I guess, from town council and some things happening that we'll pass along as we find out about appointments.
Okay.
So that's, that's all I have.
That's it? Okay. Alrighty, any other business or comments or... Happy Memorial Day to everybody. We have a, I guess, Crystal, you could probably tell us a little bit about the memorial service here, you can? Okay, Tim, maybe you could?
Sure. The memorial opening, I think, starts at 6:45 Monday, P M.
I sing the national anthem at 6:45, we start, and then there's several things that happen up until 9:00 with the lighting.
Johnny on the spot, Michelle.
Great. festivities will go till about, I think, 9:00 o'clock.
Yeah.
A lot of speakers?
Speakers, presenting flags, firing ceremonial, I guess they'll shoot the guns off from the honor guard or whoever's being present that evening. A lot of guests, a lot of invitations to different veterans groups. So it should be good, a good grand opening for the memorial and...
To our visitors, we have a memorial, I guess, would you call it a park or monument or whatever in front of the town?
Memorial Park, yeah.
Memorial Park?
Garden.
And the garden, okay. But anyway, town's done a very nice job on it. So if you'd like to visit it, it's just straight across from the town building here and might be a nice spot to stop by and take a look at it before you leave. Other than that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, right hand? Alrighty, hope you all have a nice evening and visitors, thank you for joining us.